We'll call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council, 6:00 PM Thursday, February 1st, 2024. First order of business would be to have a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. I've asked one of our local Girl Scout troops to lead us in the pledge tonight. So if you girls would come forward with your scout leader.
It's a boy scout. And a scout.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, moment of silence followed by the pledge. You can go ahead with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good.
Thank you very much for helping us. Michelle, can we have calling up the role, please?
Counselperson Azar.
Present.
Counselperson Bowlin.
Present.
Counselperson Chalos.
Present.
Counselperson DeBon.
Here.
Counselperson Dinkle.
Present.
Counselperson Hinton.
Present.
Counselperson Loudermilk.
Here.
Counselperson Nation.
Here.
Counselperson Thompson.
Here.
All are present.
At this time, we allow 30 minutes of public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. We'd ask you to come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and try to limit your comments to three minutes, please. First on our list tonight is Herb Roots. Hello, Herb.
Hi. Well, first, I want to thank.
You want to state your name and address, please?
My name is Herb Roots. I live in Portland, Tennessee. And I want to thank Cheryl Doudry because I had a misunderstanding about certain issues concerning the tax. She called me and walked me through the entire process. However, I have a vulnerability with the council about there is a decent property at the corner of Sixth and.
Washington.
I was told that they're going to build on it, they're going to build apartments. I was told that they were going to grant our building. See about granting a waiver about off-street parking. Now, I've complained about this before, and it seems like today, there is, where I live, there is no parking on the street in the daytime when they're doing business across the street where they right now have a playground because the tourney has gone down. They, if you look at the mosque, that lot is totally paved, they have a decorative fence which meets the bank, and they have bushes in front. When they're having services through about eight months of the year and the bushes are bleak, you don't really see the parking. But if you don't require one parking space per unit plus a parking space for visitors, then you're going to pour all that traffic out onto the street. You're not going to, you're just, you're destroying the neighborhood. When I was biking here tonight, I saw a couple walking their dog, and I pulled over, I talked to them. I said, "Do you have time to talk?" And they said, "Sure." I said, "Look," I told them about that lot. And the husband interrupted, and he said, "Well, we live right by the Truman House on..." You want me to raise my voice so they can hear me? Okay. "We live right by the Truman House on Center." Well, I don't know where the Truman House is. But he said, "They don't have any off-street parking there." And you talk about worrying about something, you should try living next to that place because that street is always filled with cars. And I don't know what you people have in mind for that neighborhood, but you're destroying it willy-nilly, and there's no reason for it. And I really think you should require the full amount. I had been working 40 hours a week. I quit last week so I could devote myself to this issue and other issues. I love Terre Haute. I love the people here. They're all individuals, and that's why I love them. But, you know, I don't know, it's, on 13th Street, there's another home that's been condemned within the past week. You're just trying your best to gut this city out. And I don't know what your plan is because you're just destroying the tax base. And then on this apartment, it's, all these apartment buildings that you're allowing, all of these variances for are not helping the community at all. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Kevin Southwood, I'd like to see where you'd have like, once every season, you'd have like four times a year where people could come up here and they would just give you like a wish list, like something they'd like to see in Terre Haute. You know, I read all the time where all these directions are always coming to us, and I don't never see any directions that the people have that goes to you guys, you know? So I would like to see, you know, once every three months, people come up here and they offer like a wish list or, but they would also be, you know, hey, try to give us an idea on how to see this happen. You know, like one example would be like, I'd like to see people smoking less, you know? So, you know, how would you address that? Well, I'd like to go to like the high schools and I would have a, you know, like, in a display case where you would have packs of cigarettes, and in another display case, you would have like boots, tires for a car, a leather jacket, jeans, stuff like that that they could have, but they choose to have cigarettes instead. It's just, it's just an idea on ways to try to cement the negatives into the young kids and where they could actually see a picture of a good person's lungs that dies of old age versus a person that smoked all our life and they die of younger age to signify that into your area high schools, you know, so they look at it all the time. See, that's called a trigger. You know, they see it all the time and they decide not to smoke, you know? Hell, a lot of people learned how to smoke going to school. I'd like to have the idea of having, you know, ideas like that, teach people how not to smoke so they're not carrying all these negatives decades and decades into their future. They learn how to combat them early on, you know? But like I said, I heard about where that direction was for that great sports complex on the east side. Personally, for me, I'd be against it until we start cleaning up some of our other tragedies in this area and then start talking about some pie in the sky idea. I'd rather try to help people, teach them how to get their minds around some positives and try to work that direction, you know? And let you guys focus on a direction that comes from here and let the people try to give some ideas of reflection on how to attain that. That way, it helps take some of the pressure off of you people. And plus, you would have like every three months, you have directions or wishes, you know, that people would like to see, like the people's vision, you know, of what they would like to see. And then that way, whenever you guys don't have any ideas, all you have to do is look back in stuff and say, "We got piles of ideas." You know, we just aren't implementing any of them. So it's just something to, you know, think about, you know? Every three months, you only do it one day or, you know, once a month, you know, once every three months. Not that much, but it allows people to wish, to dream, to hope, and then also to have to understand, you know, what ideas you have to have to try to implement something. You know, teach people how to implement an idea, you would help your people's lives a lot better, and you would encourage people from in the audience, in the community, to go forward to you rather than 60,000 people. You've got 50 people here. You know, there ought to be 1,000 people here.
Thank you, Mr. Southwood. Next is Shannon Giles.
Giles.
Giles, apologize.
That's okay.
Name and address for the record, please.
Shannon Giles, 8207 Wabash. But I'm here as the Tobacco Prevention and Cessation Coordinator for Tobacco-Free Vigo with Chances and Services for Youth. And Mr. Southwood, you're my new best friend. I am here to give you an update. I try and kind of package them all together so I'm not coming and bothering you all the time. But we have three really special events that are coming up that I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of. You don't have to write a bunch of stuff down. I'm going to leave a bunch of flyers with Michelle, so you guys will be all hooked up except for the ones I'm going to give to Mayor Sacman right here. February 13th, in honor of Black History Month, we are going to be doing a showing at ISU of two documentaries called Black Lives, Black Lungs. They tell the story of the targeting of the African-American community by big tobacco, specifically where it comes to menthol cigarettes. There was an act passed back in 2009 that eliminated all flavored cigarettes except menthol. The FDA and the American Lung Association and various partners have been working ever since then to get menthol taken, added to the ban. And we really made some progress in the last year. The FDA made the recommendation to the White House. The White House was supposed to act in December, and they have put it off until March. So after we do these showings, we're going to have some discussion time, and then we're going to do some advocacy time where we're going to have whoever's coming, and everybody's welcome, to do some advocacy, write some letters that we're going to have sent to the White House to talk about the fact that this really needs to happen. Most people who smoke menthol are African-American. Of the African-American population who smokes, 85% smoke menthol. This is something that is absolutely being done by big tobacco to target the African-American communities. If you look in predominantly African-American communities in bigger cities, you'll see discounts, you'll see free giveaways, the Cool Cigarette Jazz Festival. It's been going on for decades, and this is a way for us to really bring to light that situation and do something about it. Second thing, February 26th, at the Convention Center, we're going to do Circles of Change. It's sponsored by Drug-Free Vigo County, and it's to target the situation with drug-endangered children. We're going to have some fabulous speakers that are coming in from out of town. Our youth, our ILEAD and voice youth, who are actually currently in Washington DC doing lobbying with CADCA, are going to talk about their experiences. We're going to talk about trauma-informed care for drug-endangered children. It's an all-day thing. It's $50, but you get breakfast and lunch. So, and I will leave you a flyer about this. Last thing, starting February 15th, we are going to do the point-of-sale survey, which we do every two years in every grant cycle. This year, we are going to be going to 118 establishments throughout Vigo County that sell tobacco products. Some are convenience stores, some are specifically tobacco retailers. The reason we do this is because since there is not tobacco advertising, point-of-sale advertising is the way most children are targeted when it comes to tobacco products. So we're looking at things like exterior and interior advertising. Where is it located? When, if you guys go into a convenience store, you notice the tobacco advertising isn't up here, it's right here. It's right at kid height. And are they doing the disclaimers and notifications that they're required to do? If there's a marathon store at the corner of Poplar and 13th where they've got display cases with all the vape information, and it is surrounded by kiosks of toys. So it's not unintentional. It's very intentional. So we are going to be doing this 118 locations. We are still looking for volunteers if anybody wants to help out. That'll run from February 15th to April 15th. After that, we will be doing community conversations to talk about the response that we got and what we learned. The interesting thing about this year's survey is we are also going to look at alcohol and fresh food availability in these same places. Because one of the things that we noticed is that a lot of these places are located in what we refer to as food deserts. If you look particularly on the north side of town, it's a long way from the Kroger on Wabash to the Kroger on the north side, and a lot of people end up doing grocery shopping at Dollar General and convenience stores and places where this stuff is also really prevalent. So we want to look at how that mix is put together and how, what's available to people who may have to use those places for their actual grocery shopping. I have gotten for you, this is the one from two years ago, so this is the one from 2022. So you will see the places where we're better than the state, there's a lot of places where we're worse than the state. But it's some really good information to kind of give you an idea of what we're going to be doing and what we're going to be collecting. So I'm going to give copies of all this stuff to Michelle so she can get it to you guys who want it. But if you don't have any questions, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. I'm Ethan Page at 2508 Crush Street, 47803. And I want to come talk to you guys today because I have had a dream for Terre Haute of us having a flag that represents our community and unites our community together. So I'm a big traveler of sorts, and when I go into other communities that seem to be so proud and love their community, they always have a uniting symbol, a flag waving in their streets, off of their businesses, outside of their homes, et cetera, to represent their community. And you can feel the pride that that community has when you're in those areas and the love that people have for it. And it's just a wonderful passive way, I think, to unite everyone. So I went to see if, you know, perhaps, can we get this done for Terre Haute? Would other people be receptive of it? And I thought it was a wonderful idea. So what I did is slightly before Christmas, I started a Facebook group, and I was like, you know what? If I can get 200 members and get four people in the community to submit designs, then I think I've kind of proven my concept, right? That I think other people in the community might want this as well. It's not just me. I'm happy to say we have just under 400 members right now, and we have well over 50 flag designs submitted from the community. I have, not all over, because several have come in the last week that haven't printed off, but if you guys would like to see some, I've got a lot of them right here if you guys would like to look at those. So what I'm proposing is actually what we end up finding out is, no, I don't need those back, thank you, is we actually do have an official city flag. We, you know, we found out back in 1976 that Ronald Gotzez with the bicentennial asked for a flag to be made, and it was passed, but to our knowledge and everyone that's on our flag committee to help create this for our city, it was never recreated, never used, or anything else like that to our knowledge within the city. So what I would like to ask for you guys is I have a copy of the resolutions here. I probably should have given that to you as well at the same time. But I have a copy of the resolutions back in 1976 detailing that for our community. And I would like to ask for your guys' support and also for us to be able to make an amendment to this when we design on a city flag. I have a committee that's already formed with a lot of wonderful members in our community to help put on what we would like to do as a local flag contest. So I could detail it all out for you guys if you would like, but to give it to you real nice, short, and sweet, what we would like to do is we have a lot of rules in place. I've met with several people that have designed flags throughout the country for their cities, specifically Syracuse, New York, and a few other places on the East Coast, to see how they properly did this. And within our community, what we would like to do is throughout the month of February, we have the basics of the rules of how people should be able to submit designs for a flag, but we're going to really, we'd like to nail those down throughout February with our community. We'd like to have a community contest that goes from the beginning of March throughout the first week, week and a half of April, for designers to be able to submit designs, how they perceive a flag for our city and how they think, you know, this is what would represent us well and show a lot of pride. And then we would like to have the community, after our committee looks through those designs, if we already have 50, I expect us to have at least that many, if not much more submitted. That committee is set to look over those rules and really peer through what would be a solid, wonderful flag for our community, and then to have our city be able to vote on that throughout the months of the end of April through mid-May. And we would love to elect a flag at that time in which I would ask for an amendment from you guys that this is the new flag that our community selected, and for us to be able to make that the official flag. And then we're also working on saying up vendors so that we could have a lot of those flags and materials created for our citizens. And we would love to be able to hoist our flag on Flag Day, which I believe is June 14th. So that's what I have going on, and I am just requesting an amendment to that resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comments that did not sign to she?
May I ask Ethan a question?
Sure.
Ethan? I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you all considering in any of the designs or requests acknowledging the people who lived on this land before any of us got here?
So there's been, I, what we would like to do is to have people to be able to submit what their ideas are, and some of the ideas that have been submitted do seem bad. And then in that Facebook group, it grew to join this Terre Haute flag, there's been some overwhelming positive feedback on that, and there's been some overwhelming negative feedback on that. It seems to be very split 50/50. If you look Bill Wolf, he submitted a design that does give credit to Native Americans everywhere. It's like a Florida lease with an arrowhead on top of it. So I think that would be great. What I think would be probably the best idea, at least from our committee perspective, is to be able to look at those designs and go through and select the top cream of the crop, because you also see there are some that will not make for a long-lasting flag. So we'd like to pick the cream of the crop, think about what we think is very inclusive. We have a very inclusive committee there, and be able to vote that in. Yeah, I think if the community, that's why we want to have a community to vote and for the community to be able to look at those best designs and then vote in what they believe symbolizes the best. But I think that definitely should be.
The Facebook page is Terre Haute Flag?
Terre Haute Flag.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to come back to the microphone, Ethan?
Yeah.
I think there's more questions.
I just have more of a comment, Ethan. I don't think you need to come to the microphone for this, but there might be somebody else. I'm looking at the Journal of the Proceedings of the Cowman Council from back in 1976. I see lots of familiar names on here like John Lamb and Andrew O'Telsky, Bill Brighton, the mayor. But the thing that I was really looking for was, I suspected as much, the city of Terre Haute, this is in the actual city flag, the part of the code that refers to it. The city of Terre Haute desires to adopt a flag submitted by Ronald Goetz, G-O-E-T-Z. There used to be a, he probably is the guy who ran Goetz Printing downtown for a long time.
Oh, okay.
So anyway, yeah, I heard you mispronounce his name, and just for the record.
Yeah, thank you. I've been saying it the wrong way for quite a long time, so I'm glad that you corrected me.
His name is Goetz.
Goetz.
Yeah, like that, like G-E-T-S.
Awesome.
I yield, that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any additional public comments? Somebody raised their hand. Okay. State your name and address for the record.
Kathy McGuire, 1118 North 6 and 1/2 Street. And I came in support of a resolution. Your resolutions are the very end, and it doesn't name what resolutions you're talking about. But I heard there's a resolution about supporting a ceasefire in Gaza, which I do support.
We'll talk about that during our agenda items, and that's when you can make your comments. This is for items not on the agenda.
That's next week.
Oh, that's on next week's agenda.
Okay.
I'm sorry you came all the way out tonight, Kathy. It's on next week's agenda.
Next week's agenda. Anyone else?
My name's Aaron McKenzie. I'm here for special ordinance number four. It's 28th Street, North of.
Mr. McKenzie, you have to wait till I read it.
Huh?
You have to wait till I read it.
Public comments is for items that are not on our agenda tonight, so you will have an opportunity when that item is read to make your comments.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, if there's no one else, then I will close public comments. Michelle, next agenda item.
There's no corrections to the journals.
Communications from the mayor?
There is a presentation.
Good evening, members of the Terre Haute City Council. Today, I will propose our current plan, and it's a presentation on the American Rescue Plan. The previous administration had moved to spend some of those dollars. Bottom line is, by the end of this year, these dollars need to be obligated to projects. And just to kind of bring us back to how we got here in 2021, with support of the President Biden administration and Congress at the time, they passed the American Rescue Plan Act that really allowed a direct pay to municipalities and states to fund life-changing programs. These funds actually led to the Ready 1.0 program that was very successful in the state of Indiana and did help us here in Terre Haute last year. And this is kind of a, just a proposal and conversation about where we go from here. And before I get started, I'm a huge sports fan, but I can't stand streaming services. They're too expensive. You've got an ESPN app, NBC Sports app, and it really adds up. So I do what most folks do, and I text my brother, and I say, "Hey, can you Venmo me $5?" And my sister Venmo me $2. And we combine to have a stronger buying power. In municipal government, this is a concept called capital stacking. Essentially, we leverage dollars from one grand, two grand, three grands in a municipal budget to amplify our spending power to get larger projects across. That was the main focus of some of our projects that I'll present in a moment. Just to quickly inform the group of where we're at, our current cash balance as of two days ago is $19,957,875. These dollars are in Trust, Indiana, with an. These funds, although passed, have not been distributed yet. This shows the need to obligate these dollars sooner than later as we get towards that December deadline. There is a very long administrative process and audit process and close conversations to make sure that we responsibly spend these dollars, turn in our receipts, and follow the processes set by the state and federal government. All that to say, the budget left for future projects is right around $18,347,281.38. The American Rescue Plan Act has a set of guidelines that you have to follow when you look at the projects, which, you know, they're pretty open guidelines, but very specific in some areas. So we're looking at some infrastructure projects, government services, and responses to the pandemic at large. To also kind of keep discussing, this is the $3.2 million passed by the previous administration for public safety radios. Currently, we have $764,000 remaining, and the plan there, we'll have a quote next week, for the remaining funds to be used to upgrade our radios across the city of Terre Haute. This includes wastewater, street department, parks, engineering. We have not seen an update to our communications infrastructure in well over 30 years. That being said, this $750,000, it only brings us to a 90% solution. But to go from 0 to 90% in one step is positive momentum for our city's departments. Currently, we have city departments that will not use the radios because they don't have enough that are operational. They're using their cellphone. They're out there doing, you know, they're stopping traffic, fixing streets and potholes, having to call someone instead of using a radio system to get quick response and quick actions. I find that gravely concerning. The administration finds that concerning, especially. The administration finds that concerning, especially with our street department and some of the high-traffic roadways that we are on. So from approval to installation, this would be kind of an eight-month lift is what we expect. Again, this had already been passed, but I did want to provide an update on where we're at with those dollars. Let's take a look at the ARPA project scheduled for 2024. And I'm not the smartest guy, so I'm kind of like a color guy. So I color-coded these. If it's in green, this project is a capital stack project. The ARPA dollars are a small piece of the pie, and different funds have been brought in to maximize our spending power. The first is the long since talked about 13th and 8th Avenue Railroad Pass. The ARPA match, along with NDOT and several other funds, we're putting in $3 million. This is, this total project's about $29 million, I'll say. So for $3 million to get $29 million worth of investments is a strong decision in my eyes. The next project is the Brown Avenue Stormwater Project. This is a $2 million project. It is part of our long-term control plan, which is the city's 30-year plan to address combined sewage overflow. Anytime that we do a project on that list, it buys down the total cost of a 30-year project and has less of an effect on the taxpayers in the present and future. Next, we have a $4.25 million proposal for our city parks, and these are two parks that vastly need upgraded. The first is Hertz Rose, located in the Locust Street neighborhood. This park would get a complete overhaul and be upgraded in an area of our community that is desperately, desperately needing improvement. The second project are, is about $2 million for Ray Park, and, and this is a really interesting case. The Friends of Ray Park nonprofit, they've, they've raised, they're at about $750,000, shooting for a million, combined with $2 million from ARPA and a little bit from Edit, and we're putting in a Ready 2.0 proposal to fund the remainder for Ray Park and a little bit of Hertz Rose. That is a massive lift to work with the nonprofit community, the state, local dollars, and federal dollars to do a complete overhaul of Ray Park. I'll touch on all these projects in detail in the future. The next bucket is blue. These are dollars not matched by federal or state or other local dollars. It is truthfully an ARPA project. As previously discussed, we have a food desert problem. This $500,000, we're looking to split between three nonprofits to enhance the programs that they are operating, and these are necessary purchases to severely reduce their current overhead cost. The next is the Goodwill Excel Center for $250,000. We have a workforce development problem here in Terre Haute and Vigo County. We have all the jobs in the world, but if we do not provide upskilled training programs, we will eventually start cannibalizing one company for another. This project allows Hoosiers and Hoshens to get an adult high school education diploma. Graduates of the Goodwill Excel Center program go on to earn 50% more right upon graduation. Not to mention this project has a childcare component to allow parents with kids to attend school and get that next step up. The next project is $3 million towards a massive downtown infrastructure overhaul to set the conditions for development that includes hotels and a much-needed boost to our downtown economy, and I'm happy to, to touch on this later in the show. Next, we have a city hall building upgrade. Folks, to upgrade the building that we're in right now is $10 million. I think I've seen four people take off their jackets already. It's 77 degrees in this building. I'm going to show you four of the hundreds of pictures that the staff in this office have taken. Ceiling tiles caving in, roof leaks, mold, a garage that is caving in. These are problems that we cannot have here in city hall that's been neglected for far too long. The next project, we hear this time and time again, that city water is not offered to different communities in the city of Terre Haute. It's not technically city water, it's Indiana American Water. But this project with ARPA dollars and a lot of funding from the utility company brings water to the homes of hundreds of residents in Terry Town's neighborhood. Next, we have a childcare facility that I'll discuss that's in partnership with Chances Youth Center. 192-person-capacity childcare center. Childcare is one of the top issues facing our local economy and facing the state's economy at large. So let's kind of go over these infrastructure projects, and I'll go over some of that capital stacking. Let's start with the 13th and 8th Avenue Storm and Wastewater Project. So this project is part of the railroad overpass. The funds are going to provide a significant portion of our total match and cover the relocation of, of existing sanitary and stormwater infrastructure repairs. This project would go out to bid in September of 2025. This is $3 million from ARPA, and you'll see in the next slide just how much we are getting with this investment. Next, we have the Brown Avenue Stormwater Project. This is a $2 million project. This project is also part of our long-term control plan. It would provide stormwater collection on Brown Avenue. There's two districts there that you can see are split, and you can see designs of what the project will look like. The goal is to start this project in the spring of 2024. Let's hit on that capital stacking for a little bit. So let's, let's look at this 13th and 8th overpass investment. 16% of the total cost of this project is coming from ARPA. 73% is coming from NDOT, and 11% is a local match outside of this project. For a $29 million project, keep in mind, it would have been 13 and a half million if we started it just a few years ago. And as construction costs continue to rise, we have to take action in addressing our infrastructure. The next project, the Brown Stormwater Project, which is a part of our 30-year long-term control plan, that's split 50/50 between the sanitary district as well as the ARPA funds. Feel free to stop me at any time for questions. This project here next, it's, it's going to take a lot of work, all right? It's the project cost for what I call city water. This is a three-phase operation. Phase one is the passing of legislation and appropriation, and phase two is customer signup. The project cost is currently 2.5 million, but we're going to open up the bid for outside contractors to do some of the work of, of connecting the water tap-on fees, hoping to get a lower price than the Indiana American Water price. So Indiana American Water is going to invest $6 million into this project. So we're going to work with contractors, try to buy that 2.5 cost to $2 million. And in this graphic, as you can see, all of these homes are going to have access to water now. Indiana American Water is taking care of these red and yellow main sewage lines. But here's the issue. If 100% of the customers sign up to get this water connection for free, instead of paying $3,000 to $5,000 to connect it themselves and get off well water, that cost, right now, sits at 2.5 million. As those percentages go down, the project cost goes up. Because instead of upgrading an entire street and all the homes on the street, you're doing onesies and twosies, a corner here and a corner there. So this project, to keep it as cheap as possible, would require the highest amount of buy-in. The Indiana Utility Commission, Indiana American Water, and the federal government are offering more and more utility bill programs that help those who need a little bit because they're on low income lower that monthly water bill. And the reason why I say this project will take a lot of work is, we will have to have community meetings, we will have to go door-to-door, we will have to explain to the taxpayers what the monthly cost would likely be, what are the programs they can apply for to reduce their monthly bill, and of course, discuss with them that because of the American Rescue Plan Act, they do not have to pay $5,000 to tap on to Indiana American Water.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Why Terry Town? Why is that the only, why are we starting there? And why is that the only area?
Yeah, so this area, we capture the largest amount of residential neighborhoods in one large project. There are several other neighborhoods that we could look at, but it would be 10 homes here, 25 homes there, and then there's some neighborhoods where we could just pay for tapping on to a water main. Some neighborhoods don't need the full water main. But this investment is backed by $6 million from Indiana American Water. So getting 75% of the project cost really drove into the analysis of picking this neighborhood. This would start a pilot program for us so we can identify costs for future projects, and obviously, the goal would be to do a project like this to all of our neighborhoods that are not connected to Indiana American Water. And I, I don't have a timeline to get to the rest of the city of Terre Haute. I've not gone that far, because this will take about 18 months to complete, but during that process, we could identify where to go to next.
Follow-up. So if there are areas where there are five homes, 10 homes, if those folks are willing to tap in at the three to four, $5,000, if they're willing to do that, is there a possibility for Indiana American Water to move into those neighborhoods as well?
I would have to get with the company and look at the specific neighborhood, and, and then if it's, if it's a $3,000 to $5,000 cost, there probably already is a water main close. So if there's one closed, then that's an easier conversation. If they need a full water main, then we could open that dialogue up.
Thank you.
Additional questions on this? Next, we're going to discuss public spaces. So let's take a look at the city hall building upgrade. As I previously mentioned, this project costs $10 million. Had we started it three years ago, it would have cost 6.2. $2 million from ARPA. All it would really do is address the interior work of our electricity, fix the outlets. I mean, look, look at the cords we have here trying to run outlets for screens just to do a presentation. It would address some HVAC issues, some energy issues, and by choosing to do those projects first, we set the conditions and allow for future projects to renovate all of city hall. Obviously, the goal would be over four years to chip away at this project upgrade outside of this $2 million investment. Now, I said this project was not a capital stack project. We weren't getting outside dollars yet. Duke and Centerpoint Energy and other companies offer a, kind of a voucher system, where if we move to a, an energy-efficient building, we will get basically credit for investing in ourselves. So there are some programs that we will target to really lower the price just a little bit, and again, every dollar counts, and we've already engaged in conversation with the utility companies to see how much we can try and estimate that we get. The goal would be to get a couple hundred thousand dollars and start into phase two, but right now, we're going to focus on phase one, see what we can accomplish, and get started on a much-needed renovation to city hall. I want to show you just a couple of pictures. These are some photos that I've taken, and the staff, they have hundreds more. Folks, this is in one month in office, what we've seen, let alone, again, the, the dozens, the hundreds of pictures that staff members have taken. We have one woman in engineering Sally who does a tremendous job. Her office has flooded twice this month, twice alone. The restrooms down here are a little bit nicer, but if you go to the second floor and see some of those restrooms, it, it's honestly an embarrassment. And folks come here to have concerns with the controller, to pay bills, to pay their sewage bills, and for this to be a front-facing organization, we cannot bring residents into a building that is quite literally falling apart. The garage that you see on the side of city hall, vehicles cannot park in that, because that garage is caving in. It's literally caving in. We've got to invest in ourselves and our employees. Government work does not pay the highest, and we have employees who come here day in, day out, wondering if the temperature is going to be 85 degrees or 58 degrees. This is a much-needed project that I hope that we will pass for the city staff. Next, we're going to talk about our city parks. And as I previously mentioned, we have that $1 million that was already approved in 2023 to do the designs and pay some of the folks who've been a part of this project. There is about $450,000 remaining in that bucket, but we're still getting the bills and the invoices for the work that was approved. So essentially, I'm not banking on that 450, and instead planning on this 4.25. So the city parks, they, they should be our shining stars for Terre Haute's quality of life. They should be, but they're not right now. They need a little bit of work, they need a little bit of investment. I'm proposing two projects for you. One is the Hertz Rose Park, and as you can see the math here, 2.25 million from ARPA, 1 million from Ready 2.0, an application that we submitted today to the state for $1 million just to cover the rest, and 375,000 from Edit spaced out over the next two years. I, I really want to pause there. That million dollars from Ready is so important. Every dollar that we get from Ready frees up the Edit budget this year and next year for other projects, like some of the infrastructure projects, like additional parks. Let's take a look at Ray Park here. $2 million from ARPA, 1 million from Friends of Ray Park. The current bid for this project came in at 3.3 million, but previous designs failed to take into account a temporary clubhouse to keep Ray Park going. That came in about 350,000, so the project cost is 3.7 million, and I'm looking at a $4 million budget to start this project and get it done in about 14 months. It's already gone out to bid. Let's look at Hertz Rose Park for a little bit. It's the heart of the neighborhood, and it's underutilized because of its current condition. This is going to be the focal point for our neighborhood revitalization efforts. It's going to bring vibrancy to the neighborhood, there's going to be a splash pad, and it's not going to be one of the splash pads that is just on, quote, "city water" nonstop. We're going to get the recycling kind to reduce our water costs. We, we've made some of those mistakes in the past. There's a community event space that we'll have conversations about, whether or not it's interior or exterior or just exterior. Of course, we're in Indiana, we have to have a basketball court, and the total cost for this project is 2.8 million. It would be ready to bid in March. Here are some more designs. This was a really long process. They took in community feedback, had some meetings and rides neighborhood, but I, I think it looks great, and we, we're really looking forward to hopefully kicking this off. All right, Ray Park. So here's the clubhouse designs. As I previously mentioned, 3.7 million is the cost, with 1 million coming from a nonprofit entity. But I do want to stop on Ray Park for a second. Ray Park is currently in the hole, about 1.1 million. Get it in the hole golf? Was hoping for a cheap laugh from Jimmy there. But the revenues from Ray Park are about 140 to 150,000. Look at the condition of that clubhouse, without a little restaurant for, for golfers to go in, without alcohol sales, and we are still getting 140 to 150,000 a year. A revamped Ray Park starts the process of an overhaul, of adding pickleball courts and updating the tennis courts, making this a community park, especially with southern Vigo County, for folks and families, and of course, the school corporation, Terre Haute South, Westminster as well, all to utilize. By revamping this clubhouse, we are expecting to see an increase in our total number of golfers, so that 140 to 150,000 of current revenue would likely go up, which would help us pay this golf course off faster. All right, food deserts. So as some other speakers have previously mentioned today, we've got a food desert problem, and this one, this is one that I'm going to rely on you guys on. We've got 500,000 allocated. You know, I know my thoughts of the nonprofits that I would like to invest in. Catholic Food Charities is one more fridge away from, from really having that mobile pantry and opening up another center that residents can walk in. Manah from Seven is renting, renting a large truck to go to Indy and back every week to get groceries. This investment would allow them to take that out of their budget completely and own their own refrigerated truck. Terra Foods is another option that is kind of in and around that 12 Points area, food desert area, and they're close to being operational, but we'll have discussions as a group. We can meet with those stakeholders and really map out, if that's where we want to go, we can go there, but this is one that I'm very open to conversation on. All right, I'm pumped to talk about this next project. Speaking of downtown, make sure to attend Rally to the Valley, 3:00 PM this Saturday. Downtown infrastructure. This project, this $3 million, is going to help us capitalize on the convention center as well as simultaneously grow the downtown economy. It's a real transformative project in the heart of Terre Haute, Indiana. This project was used to apply for Ready 1.0 funds, so the state has already given us 31% of the cost of this project to start last year. And, and in actuality, it probably should have started last year because it was a Ready 1.0 project. $3 million from ARPA and about 6.7 from TIF. And, and just so everyone's understanding, we have about $7.4 million in our downtown TIF, so just that, there's an update there. And one reason why I think this downtown project is so important, the CBB has 38 definite contracts for next year. They have 23 contracts that have been They have 23 contracts that have been sent to other entities to lock in an event at the convention center. And then they have 30 proposals out as well. Why is that important? Of the 38 contracts that are signed and writing, that's 838 hotel rooms. The 23 firm ones would bring in another 150 per night. The proposals that have been sent out would bring in 447 per night. Ask anyone who knows a little bit about tourism and the CBB, and they will blatantly tell you that we have a hotel problem. We are turning conventions away right now because of our hotel problem. Not only would these hotels boost the convention center, they would boost all of the local businesses on Wabash. As you can see in some of the pictures, this is two hotels, a courtyard, a Renaissance, and two skywalks. Skywalks connecting an old, underutilized parking garage to these hotels, and skywalks connecting the hotels across Seventh to the Hilton to drive folks into the convention center. When people, yes?
These are the first, excuse me, I'm excited about this project, but these are the first pictures that I've seen of it. What am I seeing at the ground level along Wabash Avenue? Are these steel grills so that we don't see the cars parked behind them?
So in this little section here?
Yes.
You'll have cars. But because we have the parking garage, the amount of parking that is required for this project is greatly reduced.
Let me express right here, right now, the thing that I've said about this project ever since it was conceived. This presents an opportunity for ground floor commercial space, not for parking on Wabash Avenue. And if we're going to put 14 million of public money into this project, it should produce something other than ground floor parking space along Wabash Avenue. And I'll stop preaching there.
No, you don't need to. Councilman Nation, I'm happy you brought that up because as you'll see in the designs, there's not one but two opportunities for ground floor commercial space in these designs.
I'm talking about the whole frontage, not on the corner where, you know, a previous drawing showed a Starbucks. I'm talking about the whole frontage from the edge of Center City all the way to Seventh Street. That's the opportunity I see and the opportunity that we should be incentivizing if we are going to put 14 million of public money into this project.
Completely understand. And, you know, again, going back to the total amount of parking that's required for two hotels, utilizing an old parking garage, this is our best solution. And sometimes, half a loaf of bread is better than the entire loaf of bread.
Most loaves of bread don't cost 14 million.
This is we. All right, any questions? I'll quickly kind of cover then our proposed timeline as we do want to spend the next two weeks in dialogue. Please do. We can find time to sit down and discuss all of these projects, especially the parking situation.
Sorry. Oh, sorry. I know. Who did the design for these?
Yeah, these designs is a mixture of Dora, the hotel company, and then Gibson Development.
Okay.
And then the goal would be to start moving on the projects that absolutely do need to start, the parks project, the projects that we need to bid. We would love to bring these to the council in March. So we've got several weeks for discussion, to have conversations, and see if we can finalize, especially the food desert one. That is one, again, I'll be leaning heavily on the council for your input on that bucket specifically. Yes?
Speaking on that, I do have a question. If we're not bidding out 13th Street till September 2025, are we going to be able to get our portion paid out by the end of 2026, Marcus? Because didn't the state push our project back? So has it been pushed back to September 2025? Or has it been pushed back?
Yeah. So the project, which was originally slated for 2023, and due to state changing funding source from state to federal, brought in some environmental regulations, this puts us back. The state's willing to work with us and go ahead and invoice us for our match prior to the end of the year, which will allow us to expend those dollars.
Okay. That was just my concern for getting those spent out.
And I will add one last comment. I know this has been a long one. The funds in Trust Indiana, again, are getting that 5.4% interest rate. So although we're obligating these early in the year, the goal is to keep them in that bank as long as possible because that interest that is earned is going to our general fund. And although, you know, some will say we have a 12% cash reserve, I know that you're all fully aware that our financial situation absolutely needs to be improved. So this interest bearing account, it's really doing a lot for the city of Terre Haute right now, and the goal is just obligation these next few months and writing the checks as late as possible. Penny, any questions? Thank you, guys, for the time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor.
Michelle, any reports from public officials, city officials?
There are none. Well, wait, we skipped four.
We have one.
Pardon me?
We have a, I'm sorry, reports from city officials. Marcus, that's first.
You want to go first, Marcus? I apologize, Madam President. I was a late addition to the agenda.
Okay.
So thank you, Madam President and members of the council. I know it has been a long meeting so far, but I did not want this meeting to end without me taking the opportunity just to express my gratitude as your new Director of Public Works. My gratitude for serving in that role, and just want to express my commitment to wholly committing myself to that job with integrity. So some of you may know me from previous service to the city as the utility billing manager. And I just wanted to sort of take sort of the things that I was able to accomplish there in the way of additional customer service. We made great strides in customer service during my time there, and the department became very fiscally consistent during my time there. So I kind of want to take that same approach to a obviously larger scale as your Director of Public Works. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that in my couple of weeks now as the director that I've noticed and that I just want to make you aware of. So one thing that I noticed pretty early on is that we have a 311 citizens contact number or service that you can report different types of issues in the city. One that really got my attention early on was a call into code enforcement, and there was about six of these calls that came in. Just sort of analyzing the calls and the nature of the calls, we probably didn't handle it the best way. You know, we did a lot of sort of sitting outside in the car and kind of just observing what was going on, which I'm sure just sort of escalated to more and more calls. So I quickly sort of made the decision that I don't believe that's the way I want our code enforcement to work. Our code enforcement is going to knock on some doors, try to resolve problems faster. I don't want our 311 system to be used as a way to sort of pick at each other as citizens. And I think our code enforcement officers have an important job. I think they have a good set of rules, and I just want to be a little more assertive with enforcing those rules. Recently, I was invited to partake in the Terre Haute Sustainability Commission's Second Workshop. So I was not involved with the First Workshop, but at the First Workshop, there were some, what did they call them? There were some sustainability vulnerabilities identified. So at the Second Workshop, and a few of the council members were there, we sort of attempted to address those vulnerabilities with sort of like action plans. And I'm not, you know, I'm not a climate scientist by any stretch, but I do understand and I believe that sustainability provides some quality of life opportunities and several other types of advantages that are just associated with just being smart about your resources. So I encourage you to explore the commission's work, just try to tap into what they're doing and just, you know, I believe there'll be a third workshop. I'd encourage you to just kind of take a look at that and, you know, join in if that's something you'd like to do. So kind of going to what Mayor Sacbun had stated, January 21st, freezing cold outside. We were both sort of notified by the wastewater utility superintendent of a forced main sewer line break up on the north side of town. So I don't have any pictures for you. Some pictures were circulated on social media, and I mean, it's just, the sewer line is in, you know, probably not a shape that it can be repaired. You know, this is, we're going to do more exploring on the subject, but it just goes to the obvious need that we're going to have to invest in some infrastructure. So really, I'll keep it even shorter. You know, I'm just committed to working tirelessly, you know, for you, our citizens, this tremendous city. I'm excited for the future. Wanted to introduce myself or reintroduce myself to some of you. Jesse Tohill, your new Director of Public Works. Do you have any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jesse. So Michelle, was that our Board of Public Works? But we still have Marcus.
All right, Marcus. It's your turn. You're up.
He's getting skipped over, poor guy.
That's all right. Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. Marcus Meyer, city engineer. I've just got a quick update on one of our first projects out of the gate for the year, the Community Crossing Matching Grant paving program. If you're not familiar with the program, the Community Crossing Matching Grant is a great program put on by NDOT in the state of Indiana. They offer a 50% match in this grant cycle of up to a million dollars, which would be $2 million worth of paving. We were awarded the full million dollars. The project's currently out for bid. Bids are due back February 21st and hopefully awarded on February 28th. We'll probably see some work starting in March and paving as April rolls along and the plant opens. Total project duration is 160 days, and the roads we're looking to resurface with this. We'd be milling and resurfacing Beach Street from Fruit Ridge Avenue to Schulty Street, Schulty Street from Beach Street to Maple, Old Maple Avenue, Seventh Street from Beach Street to Maple Avenue, Oak Street from Third Street to Ninth Street, and 12th Street to 25th Street, Park Street, 14th Street to 22nd Street, Maple Avenue, Third Street to Seventh Street, and 25th Street to Fruit Ridge Avenue, 17th Street from Crawford Street to Wabash Avenue. And then we're going to be doing some interurban tire removal, roadway reconstruction on Seventh Street, 17th Street from Crawford Street to Franklin, and a concrete pavement street reconstruction on Center Street from College Avenue to Demme. And that's a pretty big list. It may not all soak in, and you may wonder how we come up with the roads that we end up paving out of this, and I can give you a quick update on that. So biannually, we do a pavement inspection using an AI powered program. It lets us get out very effectively and efficiently and quickly, rate all the streets, and we have a great platform that we can look at all the ratings and know quickly what streets need paved and what streets can wait. In addition to that, we're going to look at thoroughfares that carry more traffic, grouping streets to pave together to save mobilization costs, and then also concerns from citizens. And that's a quick overview on the way we do it. If you haven't seen the program we use, and if you want to come up and see it, it's pretty cool to see that. I know you probably from time to time get concerns from citizens regarding streets, so we're happy to talk you through any of it. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Councilperson Nation?
Marcus, thanks. Can you share that list of projects with us? I, you know, it was, it went by pretty fast. I'd like to see the list and be able to look at it with a map up on the screen at the same time.
Be happy to. And I believe it's on Data Hub if you want to see it.
Oh, all right.
Tablet from it.
On the city website already.
Excellent. I'll just go to Data Hub and look. Thank you very much.
If you have any questions later, feel free to make a call or stop by.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. Reports from standing committees?
There are none.
Reports from non-standing committees?
There are none.
Items previously tabled?
There are none.
Tax abatements for confirmation?
There are none.
Items on second reading?
There are none.
Items on first reading?
We have one. Preparation Three, 2024, $90,640.86 from Engineering Non-Reverting 0292-0042 to Lead Inspector Engineering Non-Reverting 0292-0042-01412174 for $62,307.69 to Employer Group Health 0292-0042-01413030 for $16,511.40 to Employer Social Security 0292-0042-01413010 for $3,863.80 to Employer Medicare 0292-0042-01413020 for $903.46 to Employer Life Insurance 0292-0042-014130050 for $76.77 and to Employer Perp 0292-0042-01413060 for $6,978.46.
Thank you, Michelle.
You must vote to take action.
Looks like the petitioner has made their way to the microphone. Marcus?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. I'm back. And this appropriation may run, I may say some of the same things or very similar things for Special Ordinance Number Five. So what this appropriation is for is to create the position of Lead Building Inspector within the Engineering Department. It's a position we've had in the past, but currently do not have. I serve as Lead Building Inspector right now as well as the city engineer, and it can be a little bit taxing. This position deals with, you know, a lot of unique situations that can be very time consuming, and we need someone that can spend the time and take the time to do this and provide that service to our citizens as well as to manage and oversee the other four inspectors within the office so that we can make sure everybody's using their time most effectively to provide that service. One of the key things we have here is this is an appropriation, but we're not asking for any more money from the general fund. This would come from Engineering Non-Reverting. These are funds that are collected through services that we provide so that we can pay staff and maintain those services. I think that's about all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public have any questions or want to comment on Appropriation Three, Council comments?
Madam President?
Councilperson Nation?
First, I'm fully supportive of this, Marcus. I'm really glad that you've made it a priority to have a new, to have a Lead Building Inspector for the city of Terre Haute again. It's an important step that we need to take. And on that note, if there's no further discussion, I move that we take action on appropriation number three, 2024.
We have a motion on the floor to take action on Appropriation Three, 2024, made by Councilperson Nation. Seconded by Councilperson Candace Hampton. All those in favor of taking action signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Take action?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Special Ordinance Four, 2024, vacating a portion of 28th Street located at 2736 Fort Harrison Road. No problems were noted by any of the departments.
We need the petitioner?
Yes, I'm the petitioner, Aaron McKenzie. Special Ordinance Number Four. It's 28th Street north of Fort Harrison. I own the property on the west side, and I just bought the property on the east side of it, and I'd like to get this street closed. It's just like 140 feet deep north of Fort Harrison. I've got grandkids and great-grandkids, and it's a dead-end street.
Anybody here from the public to make a comment? Close public comment, ask for council comments. Councilwoman Lauterma?
This is in my district, and I've taken a look at it. And when he came in, we pulled up the maps, and as you can see, we did question and look. You know, the house on that same block comes in from the You know, the house on that same block comes in from the front. The back part of that alley is not even open. So if he closes this middle part, it won't. It won't affect them. They use the front part. So there's really no reason. And he owns both of those parcels.
Any other comments from the council? Councilwoman Lautermil?
Make a motion that we take action on Special Ordinance 5, 2024. Oh, sorry. Special Ordinance 4, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Lautermil to take action on Special Ordinance 4, 2024, seconded by Councilman DeBon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Move forward. Councilwoman Lautermil?
I would like to make a motion that we approve Special Ordinance 4, 2024, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Lautermil, seconded by Councilman DeBon to take act, I'm sorry, to approve Special Ordinance 4, 2024. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special Ordinance 20, Special Ordinance 4, 2024 is approved.
Thank you.
Michelle?
Special Ordinance 5, 2024, amending Special Ordinance 19, 2023, City Hall salaries.
Petitioner?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. I'm back again. Now that we have appropriated the funds for the position of Lead Inspector, I would like to ask the council to amend the City Hall ordinance for salaries to include that position so that we can pursue hiring a Lead Building Inspector. I won't go over the details that we already went over, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any comments from the public on Special Ordinance 5, 2024? Council comments, questions?
Madam President?
Councilperson Nation.
If there's no further comment or discussion, I move that we take action on Special Ordinance Number 5, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Nation, seconded by Councilman Dinkle to take action on Special Ordinance 5, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Special Ordinance 5, 2024 is approved to take action.
Madam President?
Councilperson Nation.
If there's no further discussion, I move for approval of Special Ordinance Number 5, 2024.
Second.
Motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Nation, seconded by Councilman Dinkle to approve Special Ordinance 5, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Special Ordinance 5, 2024 is approved.
Thank you.
Michelle?
I believe I distributed copies of your appointments to the council committees.
I have that.
Does everyone have a copy in front of them?
No.
As soon as I get to mine, I will read it. So for public record, Michelle, I need to read these.
You can or I can, whichever. I will also post it.
Okay, I'll let you do it.
Okay.
You can read faster than me.
Finance, Contract Appropriations, and Franchises. Chairperson will be Cheryl Lautermil. Members Curtis DeBon, Anthony Dinkle, Candace Hinton, Todd Nation. Governmental Affairs, Parks, and Public Property Committee. Chairperson Anthony Dinkle. Members George Azar, Jim Chalos, Cheryl Lautermil, and Amanda Thompson. Planning, Zoning, and Improvements Committee. Chairperson Todd Nation. Members George Azar, Curtis DeBon, Candace Hinton, and Amanda Thompson. Traffic, Public Safety, Special Health, and Welfare. Chairperson Curtis DeBon. Members Jim Chalos, Anthony Dinkle, Candace Hinton, and Cheryl Lautermil.
So that'll be posted on the city website for the public information if you've got any interest in who those committee. They are city council committees, and those are the members that will be a part of those committees. All right? So next, Michelle, we move on to appointments.
Appointments to Boards and Commissions. You should have before you, and I apologize, they were printed in reverse order. Animal Control Board. There was one vacancy, there is one vacancy, and there was one applicant. So if the council person can't, I mean, sorry, the council president can open nominations. Someone will nominate, and we do not need a second. And then we'll take a vote to approve that person.
Oh, at this time then, I will accept nominations, open nominations for the position to the Animal Control Board.
Madam President?
Councilman DeBon?
I will nominate Kathy Frakes for that position.
Close nominations.
At this time, we're close nominations. And all those in favor of Kathy Frakes being appointed to the Animal Control Board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kathy Frakes, are you here?
I see what the panel's able to attend.
Okay.
She had a first speech about her.
All right. So we appreciate Kathy's willingness to step up to the Animal Control Board. Next, Michelle?
Your next one is the Human Relations Commission. You should have a copy of all of the appointment forms in front of you. I'm not sure, Council President, well-known how much you would like me to speak on this, but we only, because of how the city code is currently listing the political party affiliation, the council appointment will need to be Republican or independent, and they have to reside within the city limits or own property in the city limits and reside in the county. No applicants met those qualifications.
Okay, is everybody clear on that? We will reopen applications, the application process for the Human Relations Commission. There are very strict rules by which those applicants would be received per our city code, and we did not receive applicants that met the qualifications. Part of the application process is a political party affiliation. So we will make that clear again when we point that. Do we need to determine at this time when the application process will go out and when we will close it and then fill that position?
That might be best. We can, your next meeting is, obviously, February 8th is too soon.
Yes.
Would be, is it March 7th? I don't have a calendar in front of me. That sounds right, though. Let's look. Yes, March 7th. You could have the applications open until March 1st, which is the Friday prior to that.
Council discussion.
Cheryl, did you have, I just wondered if you wanted to state that they also must own property in the city?
Right, we can read through what those requirements are.
For what?
So I have on the website that the requirement is you have to be a resident of the city or resident of the county and own property. One or the other.
Those qualifications will also be listed on the website.
And I will update. At the time of the application opening, we did not know the party affiliation that was needed. So I will update and state that they need to be a Republican or independent. If you would like, I'll continue playing attorney. I'm sure there's a couple out in the audience that can correct me if I'm wrong. Party affiliation is determined by voting in the primaries. If they've never voted in a primary, they can be considered independent. If they voted Democrat in the primaries, they're Democrat. Or if they voted Republican, they're Republican.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President?
Councilperson Nation?
Just one question. Michelle, is this the only commission that we're making an appointment to that has that political party affiliation requirement?
The only one that you appoint to, but not the only board or commission that has the political requirement.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the point that tonight's, what with the business that we're doing tonight, this is the only one that political party is considered in. On that note, I yield.
Anyone else?
It's because of the way it's, I'm sorry. It's because of the way that the city code reads.
Yes. Councilwoman Hinton?
What do we do if we don't get applicants by March?
We will have to take recommendation from City Legal on that. At that time, hopefully, we'll have our city council attorney here to represent and advise us.
Madam President, I believe the rules say it has to be within 60 days. So you have 60 days to make that for applicants. So if nothing comes in March?
Well, just to state, and I'm probably going into legal advice, so forgive me, the current member stays on until reappointed, replaced, or resigned.
Right, but you have up to 60 days to do that reappointment. I believe it's what it says. I might be wrong.
We will clarify that with a legal opinion.
I'm getting my attorney license next week, so.
I have one, too.
Online?
So at this time, I guess what we need to do is set the date for the application process. Michelle will have it active when?
Hopefully tomorrow.
Hopefully tomorrow morning, the application will go back out to the city website. The process will be the same as it previously was. The application deadline will be March 1st, and then we will attempt to make this appointment at the March 7th meeting. Okay? Spread the word, share the love, let people know. We appreciate all of those folks that did put their name out for this position. We had a really, really good, a lot of people that were interested. We just have to follow what our city code tells us that we have to do.
And I will reach out to the applicants to explain the situation.
I appreciate that. Thank you for those that aren't here. Next, Michelle?
Fire Merit Commission. You had one vacancy and two applicants?
Madam President?
Councilman Azar?
I'd like to nominate John Brighton.
Second. Okay.
Madam President?
Councilwoman Hinton?
I'm not sure about the asterisk, but I'd like to nominate Amber Stewart.
Well, at this time, that's the only two applicants that we have received. Councilperson Nation?
Point of information. Michelle, can you explain the asterisks, please?
The asterisks were ones that I had sent you questions concerning if they met the requirements. I'm not stating that 100% they do not. Those are the ones I questioned on the information they submitted on their forms. You will also see one under redevelopment. The individual under redevelopment owns property outside the city for his residency.
Okay, so first at hand, we have a discussion for the Fire Merit Board. Two nominees on the board, and I guess there's a question about the, I'm trying to get to my notes here, the eligibility for that applicant to sit on that board. Councilman Chalos?
First of all, Mayor, can you come real quick? Can you explain to council, you know, I've had some discussions and reports of getting this done quickly tonight?
So the importance of this Fire Merit Commission, it would be to approve a list of candidates whom applied in 2023. It's 14, chief?
Yes.
Why is this important? That fully staffed, that number, that 14 number, once they're trained? If you would use that total number in the last four months of 2023, it would have saved almost $450,000 in overtime. So where that fire department is at and the way the system works with these new applicants being paramedics, EMTs, the shift schedules, it is helping us reduce that overtime cost. The goal was for the previous administration to pass the merit list for the recruitment that they did, but they were not able to meet that. And so now we have vacancies on the Fire Merit Commission, and we need to get this commission functioning so that way they can start their training. And correct me if I'm wrong, chief, how long is that training?
Full enough to the training cavity and then third additional year when it comes to paramedics. They can actually go on the trucking and stuff if they get it going on the next couple of months, probably, by all.
So I believe all the men and the women of the fire department who are here present today would stand by the comment that this absolutely needs to happen sooner rather than later so we can get our young men and women training to be firefighters of the Terre Haute Fire Department. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor, for that. I'm very excited about our attorney that's coming up. I thought that was a great idea that you had to get one onboard. I have the utmost confidence in Mayor Sakban's ability to pick someone to be the city attorney. And I see no reason he can't pinch hint tonight until we get our attorney in place. Like I said, he does the city county council business. I'd like him to come to speak about the two applicants, please.
So the Fire Merit Commission has, you know, state statute that deals with it and then city code. Those two don't exactly totally align on all points, but I think the key points drawing from both the statute and city code are residency and then kind of a prohibition on being a member of another fire department or the fire department for which you're trying to serve on the merit board, which would obviously present some obvious conflicts. But I think the intention behind the city code language that refers to any other fire department was probably geared towards the volunteers in the county. But the language that was used makes it clear that if you serve in any other fire department, you are not a applicant, an acceptable applicant under your Terre Haute city code. So I think the statute is a little broader, but, you know, the code is what both of those control, so.
Right. Does, in your opinion, looking at these twos, do those, both these folks meet that criteria?
Well, Michelle has shown me that, you know, I've been included on the emails. I don't know applicants' names or, yeah, I mean, if you want me to look at the specifics on each, I'm happy to give that opinion. But I was more asked for the generalities of what are the conditions under which they can serve. Well, I mean, in reading these, one is a former firefighter and one is a current firefighter. So I don't believe either of them would be eligible to serve.
Even the former?
Well, I think that city code, well, I think it says that you can't be a former member of the fire department.
No.
No, okay.
You cannot be an active.
Active, okay.
Member of a fire department.
You see, Mike, I have the code below. Oh, you got it.
And no more than two board members can be past firefighters?
That's what I was thinking of, George. Thank you.
No more than two?
No more than two can be passed. So that's, yes, former members, there's a limit on that, not a prohibition.
No current ones on there because a lot of folks resigned.
I think three of the four resigned beginning of the administration, so yes. And then the one that was on there didn't live in the city, so I think it's a total.
So which one does qualify, in your opinion?
Amber Stewart. Does not qualify. As an active member of another fire department, she would, it would be a violation of your city code to approve her for that position.
So any other council discussion? Curtis, are you ready?
No, no, no.
So I guess, Michael, what I would ask is, how have we determined that she is employed by another department? I just, I want us to get this right if we're going to determine eligibility of a candidate.
On her application, I am currently employed through the City of Bloomington Fire Department as part of their mobile integrated health team as a community emergency medical technician.
He's also with Riley.
I, yes, and also volunteer firefighter, EMT, with Riley Fire Department over five years in Vigo County. So obviously, a very.
So obviously a very qualified person when it comes to service. It's, I think, the merit board rules are set up to try and ensure that it's not filled up with former firefighters, obviously, and the, creating some laypeople on there is just another condition that the council thought was a good idea, following the state statute.
Councilwoman Dinkle.
Michael, I just want to clarify, I don't see anything in code that prohibits a volunteer firefighter. Just want to be clear for the future.
Yeah, no, I think remuneration is conditioned. I mean, I think, I don't think that volunteer, I think it has.
I just want to check when you said Riley, I wanted to make sure that wasn't a.
No board members may receive remuneration as salary in the city or of any other fire department or agency or hold another elective or appointive office in either city, town, township, county, or state government.
So, so in your opinion, a volunteer position with another fire department would not disqualify a future applicant? If there's no remuneration?
That's correct.
Okay, I yield, thank you.
Madam President.
Councilperson Hinton.
Thank you.
It's okay.
I asked for clarification on remuneration for Amber. She sent, and the HR department from Bloomington sent us an email to say that she was not paid to the fire department.
I'm asking Michelle to deliver that. I also received that and was going to ask you to take a look at that.
That would change my opinion.
And.
But on Gateway, it's listed under the fire.
I'm just presenting what they.
And she's listed as an employee under Bloomington Fire.
On Gateway?
And on their website.
And then you get Amber right here. Yes.
I, I mean, the code says no board members may receive remuneration as salary from the city or any other fire department. Yeah, I mean, I don't think that, I mean, if she is not paid, she's not paid by the city, which is another prohibition, she's paid by Bloomington, is not a member of the fire department, is an EMT, I, I think that, I don't see anything in the city code that prohibits her if she's not a member of another fire department in a paid position.
Well, we have two nominations. I'm all for voting.
Any other additional council comment? I mean, we really.
Madam President, I move to close nominations. Go to vote.
And then Cheryl had one more, something to.
Okay. I didn't see it.
I mean, you can't serve on it.
So what's the council's pleasure here?
Call the question, off the question.
Okay, at this point, we have two, two candidates.
If I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you've got two choices. If we do a roll call vote, I'll announce your name, and we'll have to do each candidate individually, or we can do a ballot vote, and then I announce the voter number. Which do you, which would you prefer?
Let's do a ballot vote, please.
Who knows, I send this little bottle.
I thought that was a five-hour energy.
It is.
Oh. Yeah, an extra.
I got a little something else extra in it. It's extra for sure.
This old guy made me a little Flowmax.
I just took a sip.
I think it's required of a ballot.
I know how to manage things.
And it also required a sip.
I have a dog in the next fight, but not necessary.
They'll be bringing you by a ballot if you have your name on it, and you'll need to mark one box, and then you will need to find it, and then the other person will pick it up. Oh, that's right. Let's hope they have your name on the ballot.
Should I restate this nomination? No, let it go.
Does that one make sense if we were to give the one? That's a good one.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Do them again?
Yep.
Okay. Should I, you want me to say it, or do you want to say it?
I'll say it.
What should I go saying?
Point of clarification, if we could have the council nominate someone and get a second for each nominee again, just to clarify, there may be a contradiction in the city council rules on which way.
I didn't think we needed a second.
You do.
But just ask them to state their nominee again and give a second.
Okay, just for clarification, our rule, our request us, require us to ask for a nomination and then for a second?
Yes.
So if you could state your nominations again, please, for the Fire Merit Board. Those of you who nominated somebody.
Okay, I nominate John Brighton.
Second. Okay, nomination for John Brighton by Councilwoman Azar and seconded by Councilperson Loudermilk. Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Amber Stewart.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have, Councilwoman Candace Hinton has nominated Amber Stewart, seconded by Councilperson Dinkle. This time, we can count our vote total?
Has everyone turned in their?
Ballots.
Yes.
Councilperson Dinkle voted for Amber Stewart. Councilperson, one second, I'm sorry, these weren't in alphabetical order. Okay, let's start again. Councilperson George Azar, John Brighton. Councilperson, Jim Chalos.
Bowlen.
She's last.
Okay.
John Brighton. Councilperson DeBon. John Brighton. Councilperson Dinkle, Amber Stewart. Councilperson Hinton, Amber Stewart. Councilperson Loudermilk. John Brighton. Councilperson Nation, John Brighton. Councilperson, Council President Bowlen, John Brighton. That is six for John Brighton, three for Amber Stewart. Let me read them again. George Azar was for, Councilperson George Azar, John Brighton. Councilperson Jim Chalos was John Brighton. Councilperson Curtis DeBon was John Brighton. Councilperson Anthony Dinkle was Amber Stewart. Councilperson Candace Hinton, Amber Stewart. Councilperson Cheryl Loudermilk, John Brighton. Councilperson Todd Nation, John Brighton. Councilperson Amanda Thompson, John Brighton. Council President Tammy Bowlen, Amber Stewart. That is six for John Brighton, and three for Amber Stewart.
So at this time, we'll announce that John Brighton will serve as a council appointee to the Fire Merit Board. Congratulations. Michelle?
Madam President, can we take a quick recess?
Information tech.
We asked for a quick recess. We'll just take five minutes.
Oh, we got two more.
We all.
We just got two.
Well, the one's long, so go ahead.
Okay. Are we going to bear through it?
We'll bear through it.
All right, we're going to pass on, we're going to pass on the short recess.
Do you want an extra Flowmax?
Okay. Information technology, two vacancies, four applicants. Steve Chinnewith, Chris Garner, Nathan Leek, and Leslie Marnawick. Reminder, please do, just a point of clarification, to be safe, you will have a nomination and you will have a second.
Something going on?
Madam President?
Councilwoman Nation.
I move, I move to, I nominate Chris Garner.
Second.
If Councilperson Nation nominated Chris Garner, seconded by Councilperson DeBon. Are there any other nominations?
Two.
Any two?
Yep, I nominate Steve Chinnewith.
Second.
Councilwoman Azar nominated Steve Chinnewith, seconded by Councilperson DeBon. Any other nominations?
Council President, I'd like to nominate Nathan Leek.
Second.
Councilperson Loudermilk has nominated Nathan Leek, seconded by Councilperson Hinton. I think that's all of them, isn't it? Nope, I'm right. Any other nominations? This time, we'll close nominations. We can take a ballot vote, please?
We wrote for two on this, correct?
Correct, we were voting for two. Two of the three nominated.
It's cold in here. It's cold in here.
Yes, it's cold.
Freezing.
They just messed up the thermometer.
The airworks good.
You can flip it back now.
You can put it just on regular, regular.
Yeah. My drink didn't have ice a minute ago, now it's full ice.
Did everyone vote for two?
I didn't. I did not.
You don't have to vote for two.
Oh, shoot, I didn't either.
You have to vote for two, come on.
Do we have to?
Should have taken Jimmy's recess.
I told you. We needed a recess. George, do you have to? AJ, we need a recess.
I remember reading in somewhere.
I agree.
I believe you do.
Okay, give me a minute.
Okay. Anybody have the Jeopardy music?
I said we should play Terre Haute trivia while we count this vote. We could stump the mayor, we could like stump the mayor with Terre Haute trivia.
Sure. You're not going to stump him with IU trivia, I can tell you that.
Terre Haute trivia.
I could take him on IU trivia.
Yes, each, each member of the council may cask up the vote per vacancy on each vote held by ballot. Per vacancy.
So it's may?
There's two vacancies, so you have to vote for two people, according to what I read.
May is different than shall.
May is different than shall.
Will I get kicked off the council? May or should? I don't know these people.
I have a vote for two, to be safe.
I am.
I don't care whatever anybody wants, if they want to vote for one, go back and do it all over again. As long as I'm home by Sunday, I don't care.
Are we ready? You're ready, Michelle.
Okay.
Forward with the vote count, please.
Councilperson Azar voted for Steve Chinnewith and Chris Garner. Councilperson Chalos voted for Steve Chinnewith and Nathan Leek. Councilperson DeBon voted for Steve Chinnewith and Chris Garner. Councilperson Anthony Dinkle voted for Steve Chinnewith and Chris Garner. Councilperson Candace Hinton voted for Chris Garner and Nathan Leek. Councilperson Cheryl Loudermilk voted for Steve Chinnewith and Nathan Leek. Councilperson Todd Nation voted for Steve Chinnewith and Chris Garner. Councilperson. Councilperson Amanda Thompson voted for Steve Chinnewith and Nathan Leek. Council President Bowlen voted for Steve Chinnewith and Chris Gardner. That's eight for Steve Chinnewith.
The two.
Six for Chris Gardner, and four for Nathan Leek. Okay, so the council has voted to appoint Steve Chinnewith and Chris Garner to the Information Technology Board. Thank you to everyone who applied for that position. All right. Next, Michelle. Two vacancies, eleven applicants. You can look at the application form for Jerika Allen, but one of the requirements is that the applicant must live in the city limits, and it appears the, her residency, their resi, I'm sorry, their residency is outside the city limits. You should have, you'll need to make a motion and a second for nominations, and only, a council member can only nominate one person.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Hinton?
Come on now.
I'm sorry, Candace.
Recession.
Everybody's tired.
I nominate Mark Taylor.
Second.
We have a nomination on the floor for Mark Taylor, made by Councilwoman Hinton.
Madam President.
Second.
I nominate Nicole Jones. Oh, we had a second, I'm sorry.
Seconded by Councilperson Nation.
I apologize. Enough to add to myself there.
That medication, that pain, baby.
Yes, then the pain medication.
Any other nominations?
Yes, Madam President, I nominate Nicole Jones.
Any seconds? Any other, any seconds to Councilperson DeBon's nomination of Nicole Jones? Okay, we'll move on with any other nominations?
I nominate Jennifer Hanley. Second.
We have a nomination on the floor for Jennifer Hanley, by Councilwoman Chalos, seconded by Councilwoman Azar.
The way around.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nominated by Councilwoman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Chalos. Apologies.
Madam President, I nominate Karen Nassar.
We have a nomination on the floor for Karen Nassar, made by Councilwoman Chalos, seconded by Councilperson Thompson. Any other nominations?
Madam President?
Councilman Nation?
I nominate Erin Addison. Second.
We have a nomination on the floor for Erin Addison, made by Councilwoman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Dinkle. Any other nominations? At this time, I will close nominations, and Michelle, can you provide us with a ballot for voting?
And everyone, please vote for two.
We need to vote for two.
Can you count?
That's dangerous for a politician.
You won't live that down now.
I won't. I wouldn't, that's my claim to opinion.
You are.
Vote for two.
Yeah, that's actually... There are some specific ones to this.
I think I'm very vague.
We're missing a candidate on this.
Who?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We didn't have a second. Okay, back down. That's scary.
I bet you the next motion, they'll be waiting for mine. I'm waiting. I told you. It says fifteen twenty minutes. Because this could go. I'm joking. Good.
Thank you.
In here. I think you did it on purpose so you'd get the money for the vote. Pretty good call. He knows what he's doing. He's trying to turn it out. You win.
Are we ready? We are ready, Michelle, if you will... Councilperson George Azar voted for Jennifer Hanley and for Karen Nassar. Councilperson James Chalos voted for Jennifer Hanley and Karen Nassar. Councilperson Curtis DeBon voted for Jennifer Hanley and Karen Nassar. Councilperson Anthony Dinkle voted for Jennifer Hanley and Erin Addison. Councilperson Candace Hinton voted for Mark Taylor and for Erin Addison. Councilperson Cheryl Lautermilke voted for Jennifer Hanley and Karen Nassar. Councilperson Todd Nation voted for Mark Taylor and Erin Addison. Councilperson Amanda Thompson voted for Jennifer Hanley and Karen Nassar. Council President Bowlen voted for Mark Taylor and Erin Addison. Going alphabetically, Erin Addison received four votes. I'm learning my alphabet still. Jennifer Hanley received six votes. Karen Nassar received five votes, and Mark Taylor received three. So the council representatives to the redevelopment commission will be Jennifer Hanley with six votes and Karen Nassar with five votes. Thanks to everyone who applied for that, we had a lot of interest, and it's important for those folks to stay involved, stay engaged. Appreciate your support. Michelle has one more thing for us to read. I have it here if you need it, Michelle. Oh, no, here it is. I got it, sorry. So Michelle's going to now announce the council appointments to the boards that we sit on. As a reminder, we will need a motion and second and a vote to accept them. The entire? Yes. Riverside, Tammy Bowland, solid waste management, was it expired? No, these are, I'm sorry, that's, this is the entire list of people. Okay. Riverside, Tammy Bowland, transportation policy, Candace Hinton. E-111, E-911, Anthony Dinkle. Animal control as a non-voting member, James Chalos. Area planning, Amanda Thompson. Downtown Tarahoe, Todd Nation, and... The last one does not need to be voted on. Okay. Would you like me to repeat those? Anybody need those repeated? Please say no. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept those council member appointments to the various boards that we serve on in our community.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion on the floor to accept those council member appointments by Councilwoman Hinton, seconded by Councilwoman Nation. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Board appointments are accepted.
Is that it?
That's it. I hope so.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Motion to adjourn, adjourned by Councilwoman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Chalos. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't think so.